States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Board meetings are generally held on the third Tuesday of the month. The Board of Education is a body of school district residents elected by the community in charge with conducting school-related business. The meetings are conducted under the open meeting law but are not open forums for the community. With that being said, visitors to these meetings are to conduct themselves properly and with respect to any other individuals at the meeting. The Board of Education reserves the right to remove any individual for improper display of behavior or inappropriate language. The Board of Education will have a period of time devoted to visitor requests, following any board presentations and the approval of minutes shortly after the opening of the meeting. Individuals wishing to address the Board will be permitted to speak up to three minutes. A total of thirty minutes may be allowed for public comment. If we have visitors tonight, we can go over a protocol once we get there. With that being said, Carla, would you please do roll call?
Ms. Harding?
Here.
Mr. Hyde?
Here until six-thirty, then I'm heading to soccer.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Mrs. Younger-Davis?
How's it going?
Press the bell.
I am here.
Mrs. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Z.
Okay, we do not have any presentations tonight, so on to the approval of minutes. Be it resolved that the minutes of September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, a regular meeting be approved? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, that was quick, Carla. I think Maria hit it in there first and then Matt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion passes. Carla, do we have any visitors tonight?
We do not.
Okay. Approval of warrants, be it resolved that after an audit of the bills, payment of the warrants, and internal claims, audit reports be approved. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Natalie. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Treasurer's report, be it resolved that treasurer's reports for August twenty twenty-three be approved? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We don't have any policies for tonight, so it's just time for some reports. Christine?
I don't have a lot tonight. Our audit is done and was uploaded last night to the state. Next month, he'll be getting that for review and presentation and approval. And on the agenda tonight is the budget calendar, so here we go again.
Yeah, we just. Thanks, Christine. John?
Yeah, lots of great things and activities going on and certainly a lot to celebrate this month. So in review, last week, Wednesday, the girls' soccer team held their teacher appreciation night and recognized, you know, three outstanding teachers, then celebrated Friday's game with their senior recognition night, which is great to be at. That same night last Friday, the JV and Versity Girls volleyball team hosted a Dig Pink awareness celebration. I would like to thank, you know, Courtney Kelly and Corinne Kofta for putting that together and the JV and Versity Girls volleyball teams. It was a great event and the proceeds support our own Genesee Cancer Awareness Assistant Incorporated right here in Genesee County. So something new this year for them and it was a great turnout. Last Friday, we also had the new OA Hall of Fame inductees here for a student assembly, a tour of the campus, and a luncheon that was put on by Mrs. Fisher and some of her students. Administration attended the luncheon, the food was great. And congratulations to Pauline Brundage, class of forty, nineteen forty, Jeff Allen of eighty-five, Paul Osborne of eighty-nine, and Melissa Gardner, ninety-nine, that were inducted Saturday night at the dinner here in our cafeteria. And it was great just to meet them, they talked with our kids, and just a great, great group of OA alum and congratulations, they make us certainly proud to be on our Hall of Fame. Last Friday and Saturday, Mr. Bueller along with his coaching staff and the Versity cross-country team headed to the Saratoga to complete in the Burnt Hills Invitational that was that Saturday morning. They had a blast. And I personally want to thank the Board for supporting that trip. I know it was something new and thank you to the cross-country parents, you know, for helping us getting them there. They kind of surprised us with a charter bus that they took instead of a, you know, Oakfield Alabama school bus. So, and Connor DeMoy finished first in the race and actually had the eighth fastest time among all the school divisions at the invite. I want to say there was over five hundred runners. He's amazing, so awesome job, Connor. And yeah, they had a blast and Connor finished first and it was just a great experience for them to be there. I think they might want to make that a yearly annual trip. We had a very successful superintendent conference day yesterday with teachers and staff working hard on curriculum mapping, in-service trainings, and attending department chair meetings. It was productive for everyone. As I mentioned to the Board, I do like the idea of having those superintendent conference days on Mondays. And it just happened to work out that the kids thought I was a genius by having it, you know, after a late-night Bills game, which I kind of went along and played with them and said, yep, I planned that on purpose, which obviously I didn't. But yeah, it was a great day, a lot of work being accomplished here, so thank you for all the teachers and staff that, you know, obviously got a lot of work done, so thank you for all your hard work. And just tonight, if you happen to be on campus, we had a modified volleyball game occurring, modified soccer was playing at four-thirty, the modified cross-country race began at four-thirty this afternoon out back. We have our senior rec night for our cross-country beginning around, well, right about now that we're missing. Our Versity Lady Soccer Team hosts a pre-quarter sectional game tonight at seven o'clock out back versus Avon. Lot of great things going on on our campus, so, you know, wrapping up the regular season and heading into sectional play. This Thursday is senior rec night for our volleyball as they host Pembroke at six-thirty, and this Friday is senior rec night for football as we host Avon here under the lights at seven o'clock. Our eighth-grade trip to Washington, D.C. leaves early tomorrow morning. First stop is Gettysburg and then they return late Friday night back to OA. And again, thank you to the Board, this is always a great trip, you know, I've been on it thirteen times in my years past, and I know the chaperones and the kids are looking forward to it, especially with the weather, supposed to be sunny and about seventy-five, unlike here, so they'll have a great couple days there in D.C. We have our fall flu clinic scheduled for this Friday for all in-school employees and our community residents from two to four-thirty, so if you would like to get a flu shot, pop on in, it'll be held right here in the community room and are welcome to get your flu shots. The Student Advisory Committee will have its first meeting with me next Tuesday afternoon during office hours. Got a great group of kids on that committee and we'll get that up and running for the school year. And the Teacher Advisory Committee will have its first meeting with me next Thursday afternoon after school. Again, some great teachers on there and I'm looking forward to the collaboration discussions with our students and teachers moving forward into this year. The postcards regarding the Allah Brave Consulting focus groups were mailed to all community residents. If you haven't received one, you probably will in the next day or so. Those focus groups will be held on Monday, November thirteenth, and Wednesday, November fifteenth, beginning at six o'clock in the community room for anybody that's interested. These focus groups are for district residents that currently don't have any ties to our school district. They don't have students attending here, they're not employees here. What we want to do is reach out to our community residents just to know their thoughts and feedback and suggestions about our district and OA itself. So you'll see that on the postcard, that if you fall into that category, you can attend one of those nights, call district office, reserve your spot for one of those nights, and then you'll have the chance to come in and provide us feedback on how you think OA is and how we're doing. And our new front digital sign, obviously it hasn't been working in the last month, she'll be installed hopefully within the next couple weeks. It's going to look beautiful, lot bigger, a lot brighter, and we can't wait for, you know, to put announcements up there. Carla's chomping at the bit to get something up there, so we were told mid-October, so it should be here and installed within the next few weeks. And last but certainly not least, this month is School Board Recognition and Appreciation Month. I do personally want to thank you as a school board, each and every one of you, for your continued commitment and dedication to our students, our employees, our community, and to me. Your support of what we do here is unwavering and thank you. I apologize, like I said, I have something for you, I'll get it to you later. There was a, you know, a mix-up with the printing, so I apologize, but I'll get that to you as soon as I can. And I just, you know, being a former board member myself, I know it's a volunteer position and it has intense thankless job responsibilities and decisions that you need to make, and you do it very, very well. And, you know, it's, you know, moving into another capital project, these decisions aren't easy, you know, you get it from all angles. And I just want to thank you for, you know, not only volunteering for this position but doing it very well and supporting myself and our admin team and our employees here and our community to make this the best district in the area. So thank you, I appreciate that. That's all I have, that's all.
Thank you, John. Amy, any updates?
Yep. At the middle high school level, Matt Peterson and I have been working with Don Fisher and Courtney Marsh with our transitions program, getting that up and going so that our students can have a couple periods a week to work on some of those soft employment skills, whether it's time management, organization, things like that, and developing their exit documents that they will need for their post-secondary goals, so reviewing what their goals are and helping them get some of that material and documentation together before they exit as seniors and take that next step. So we're working on getting that pretty much finalized and set up for our students. As John said yesterday, we had the superintendent conference day, we worked, the middle high school worked really, really diligently, we worked on frontline a little bit more, getting some more practice with that as we have progress reports coming up. And we looked really closely at some progress monitoring and we spent a good time creating some tools that would be useful for the staff in their classes and tracking. And we also spent a good chunk of time on looking at our IDP goals and just really taking a really good look at the language that we're using, making sure that they are observable and measurable, things like that. So we did a really good in-depth overview of that yesterday. We also, as a department, working on the social education handbook, got about half of it done, and so hoping to have the second half of it finished by Thanksgiving so that we'll have some consistent language together for staff, for clear expectations, efficiency, but it'll be a nice tool for everybody to reference.
Thank you, Amy.
Yep.
Connie?
So lots of good stuff happening on the health and wellness front. At the end of September, we have Walk to School, which always is a great success, it was once again. I've mentioned before how having Brittany Kessler as Health and Wellness Member has just really jump-started that committee again. She's got us, us as a district, whoever wanted to participate in the GB Region's Grid Iron Challenge, and it's a physical fitness challenge that people can participate in, so we've got quite a few. And actually, I just checked before, I think our district is now in fifth place, which actually we've gone up, we were in eighth, so that is awesome. And she does some fun little things to keep people motivated with that. Like John said and Amy mentioned, we had conference day, a lot of stuff going on. We, big pieces with our mental health team, we had a GB representative come in and really work with our larger mental health team, so including our nurse, our social worker, our psychologist, our counselors, our behavioral specialist. So they spent the morning together and then in the afternoon, and I know J.C. was here, he would share that with you, he spent the afternoon with the middle high school mental health team, really identifying ways to better identify our at-risk students using some data that they might not normally look at. And so I didn't see the one-hundred percent outcome, but I know the whole team was really charged up and excited to have that done. The usual curriculum stuff happened, we had GB come out, work with our middle high school teachers, core teachers in particular, on blueprint assessments, aligning our assessments to the standards and depth of knowledge. So that will be ongoing work all year. Matt and Lit team had opportunity to meet and dig into data, and that's pre-K eight that needs to do that. So overall, just amazing day. Up and coming just in elementary because Lynn is chaperoning tonight, we have Unity Day tomorrow, so if you see a lot of teachers and children in orange, they're doing anti-bullying, that's what's going on with that. Next week is Red Ribbon Week, Mr. Janikowski had put out, they have kind of themed dress, I don't think it's dress up every day, but there's some sort of theme each day, so if you have littles, you may notice that as well, that they'll be dressing up. So yeah, lots of good stuff, lots of good stuff.
Thanks, Connie.
Yep.
Mr. Z.
All right, well, today, the BOSU's truck pulled up and dropped off a hundred and fifteen of our home books, so partial delivery of our batch for this year, so that's a thing for sure. They are going to be probably in the mix of grades three through seven or so, in the middle of the upper elementary and middle school, so they will be getting their three- to four-year cycle home book coming in the next coming weeks. Yesterday, on the security front, we did some testing of the lockdown system, both from the push-button side and from the dial side of the Cisco phones, tried a couple different locations, tested it all the way through the automatic dialing of nine-one-one, and we had Jordan Alejandro there with us to verify probably within twenty seconds that nine-one-one said, we just got the alert. They actually see where it was triggered from too, which is nice. And I even worked with them today, so that dispatch is now going to receive an email as well that tells the location or the phone that dialed that. So dispatch can tell Alejandro without even having to look at his own phone where it was triggered from. So blue lights are working outside, the speakers and horns have been installed as well, so really all the things we were waiting for for the security front are now in place and we got the chance yesterday to test it. And it was a lot of moving pieces that all worked as we expected, so just one minor thing I think just left, it's the doors releasing the elementary building, but that was probably a two-and-a-half-year project that now we can say is wrapped up and is working as expected. So that's the security side. And then one last thing, I won't be here next week, I'm sorry, next month, I'll be coming home from the brainstorm conference in the Poconos in Pennsylvania, driving home when the board meeting's happening. I get to present and attend, so they have me presenting on Parent Square, and I created kind of a David Letterman top-ten list of like all the things we love about Parent Square and why you would love it too. I'm going to be presenting that because they wanted to see, that's kind of a hot topic now, is, you know, apps that parents have and ways for schools to communicate with everybody. So that is, I'm the doc there, so I'll have J.C. here recording with an iPad for the meeting, but yeah, that's pretty much everything.
Thanks, Rob. OATA, yeah, Trina?
Yeah, I just got it. So I'm going to add to John's list of last, on Friday, our seniors went to, and this isn't OATA, sorry, we went to Holiday Valley, some of you might know, some of the kids who went, twenty-seven of our fifty-seven-ish kids attended and they were amazing, kids were up on ropes that you would not have thought would have been up in trees and ropes. So it went really well, so I just wanted to put the plug in there for those kids, they had a great time. On our front, we are working with the element, well, the elementary and high school, we had our building-level meetings, which went well. We're also putting together a trunk-or-treat with the PAC committee and looping in our leadership kids with Tracy for our elementary kiddos on Tuesday for Halloween, they'll come up in different areas, have different sections for the kids to trunk-or-treat, so that's the most of recent things that are going on, so it's really, things have been going well.
Thank you. CCA, anything, Deb?
I suppose make up now.
No.
You're good?
I'm good, thanks.
Paige, any updates from the high school?
Not much, I know everyone's excited about the upcoming sectional seasons and everything, and we've kind of reached the halfway point of the first quarter and everything seems to go well. I know a lot of kids are happy with the communication between teachers and parents, missing dates and stuff, like I was out of school on Friday because I was helping with the inductees and just teachers emailing everything that we missed, even if I went in, all the communication is good and everything, so everything's good.
Thanks, Paige. Okay, I have a new business. Be it resolved that items eight-point-two through eight-point-ten be approved by consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, Carla, I don't think we had any communications, sorry, other than what's here. On the personnel, be it resolved that items eleven-point-two through eleven-point-eight be approved by consent agenda? Can I get a motion?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I just, there's a resignation here that I want to, not a resignation, a retirement. Mrs. Hagan retires from the cafeteria, and I don't have the numbers of years that she's been here, but I'm pretty sure she was here when I was here, Mrs. Hagan.
That's got to be pushing thirty, right? Over that. So when I was in elementary school with her daughter, I'm told that she may know the Oakfield recipe for dunkers and the chocolate chip cookies, I'm just going to throw that out there.
Is that right? I'd like to know the one.
She knows the recipe, the big, no, the old, the big ones.
The original hybrid date was September twentieth, nineteen ninety-five.
Nineteen ninety-five, so I was in an elementary school. You guys just missed her.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Hagan, we really appreciate your commitment to our district and our students for providing them with excellent lunches here at the caf. So good luck and hope you enjoy your retirement. Any closing remarks here we have tonight? Javna, start off with you, please.
I'm good, I don't have much. Everything seems to be going well, I would echo Paige's, Bodie's been out, hasn't been in school for like a month and has been able to keep up on everything being sent from the school, so should you have somebody that needs to stay home for a certain degree of time? We got teachers that send their work, so, and kids that'll drop it off if it can't be sent electronically, so very good. You know, that was obviously, you know, you don't want anybody to be out of school that long, but, you know, it was easy to navigate that, which takes stress off of, you know, the rest of it, so.
Thanks, John. Marianne?
Just good luck to all of the sectional games coming up tonight, picking it off with soccer. Also, excellent middle high school national honor induction ceremony, I don't know, was that two weeks ago now?
Seems like a long time to go.
My weeks are starting to blend together. It was a beautiful ceremony, nicely done, I love the way that they get like the upper classmen kind of involved in that, it really motivates, you know, the middle schoolers to keep on keeping on. And then the only other thing, just in being at the volleyball game last week and the senior rec night on Friday for soccer, I just want to point out how great the relationship between the faculty here, the admin team here and the students, it's just, it's so neat to see everybody outside of school hours just kind of having fun and joking around together, and it really is that, that family culture really just shines through when you're outside of this building. And even my family, I have family in Elba who were here for that game, they even commented on how cool it is to see that, that family and community here, so just something worth mentioning for sure. Thanks, Marianne.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
So I guess we're moving the, you know, the capital project forward to the next stage. I see, you know, John's put together a newsletter for the community, hopefully the meetings are well-attended, hopefully the community is, you know, aware of what's going on and, you know, I know some of us are asked questions, hopefully you get good attendance for those meetings and, you know, the public shows up and gets the answers they're looking for.
Thanks, man. Pete?
I don't have any dad echo up on everybody else, but I mean, really, yeah, it's been, I don't know what is different about the communication, I think everybody has mentioned it, but this year it just definitely, like we just picked up where we left off last year, like there hasn't been any beginning of the year, like it's just been good.
Thanks, Pete. Natalie?
Sure, so I just want to say I'm really excited about moving forward on this capital project that we've had presented to us over the past few months. I can see the opportunities, it can offer OA kids and I hope the community agrees as well. The building advancements that we're able to implement for our students for their academic enrichment is absolutely amazing. Our kids have so many opportunities here and ahead of them, we've got these great science and tech areas being offered, so I'm very excited about that. And I can't wait to see what type of career paths that the kids facilitate with this capital project. And then along with that, over the last month, we've had open houses, several school events, and I just want to commend our staff, especially the custodians, because every time I enter this school, whether it be the high school or the elementary school, I feel they keep it looking so nice and presentable, so our money is well-spent, they're doing such a great job, and I think sometimes we don't commend them as much as we should, so the lawns look great, buildings are clean, tidy, your work does not go unnoticed, so. And finally, I just wanted to congratulate Mrs. Hagan on her retirement, and as an OA student, I feel she was a staple here in the lunchroom and she'll be missed, so congratulations. And I hope she gets some quiet picnic lunches.
Thank you, Natalie.
Yeah, everything's been going well, I hear us talk about the opportunities that our kids have in the district and this capital project being one of those that I hope people do get, we've heard this coming up for several months now, a lot of the background, we've had a chance to ask questions, we're still asking questions, but a lot of thought goes into this stuff and it really is hard to project, but a visionary type of concept and for us, again, hearing it multiple times, I hope people can come get their answers to their questions if they need to, to provide, you know, kind of what opportunities we have. I mean, the kids just went to, did you mention that?
I did not, no.
Well, they did, they came back, they happy, the ropes course, that's what made me think, they just went to that, they had so much fun, turn around, and my eighth grader goes tomorrow to Washington, I mean, the opportunities that I know other schools do as well, but I want to thank the chaperones and the district and everybody putting those kids on those trips and going, and I'm not going myself, but I feel very comfortable and confident my kiddo's going to be safe with everybody and I just really appreciate them taking all the kids as their own and taking good care of them and giving those opportunities, so thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. I really hope that people attend the capital project meetings as well, so they have the ability to ask questions and feel out if this is something that they're going to support. I feel like our board has been involved from the get-go through facilities committees, most of us have been present at those meetings when we were able to be there, and I feel like we support this capital project. John also alluded to a ladder that's going to be going home, Ale, from Ale, I just get it wrong every time, Ale Briva or Ale Brava, which is a consultant company that's really looking closely at our culture and climate. As a board, we've had the ability to be interviewed, to kind of let them know what we feel like our culture and climate is, but that's from thirty thousand feet, we're not here every day, you are. And when you are here, you have a much better idea of what it feels like to be within these walls. I'm quite certain the survey has gone out.
Yes, so the board has been interviewed, the administrative team has been interviewed, all of the employees, instructional and non-instructional staff, the survey links went out yesterday morning, they'll have two weeks to reply to those questions. The following two weeks, a link will go out to parents that do have students currently in the district. Within these next two weeks, as long as, aside, you know, from the teachers and non-instructional staff filling them out, the students also will have the opportunity to fill them out. I believe Lynn will have, you know, certain homerooms, I believe up at the middle high school, it might be during a certain class, you know, ELA class or something, but those teachers will have the links to give to their students. And then again, the postcards will now hit everybody that isn't associated with the district. the district, if you don't have kids here, if, if you're not tied to here, you're not an employee, we also want to hear from you, so it covers, you know, everybody within the community, you will have an opportunity to provide us feedback, so yes.
So it's really important, thanks, John, it's really important that the survey is, is completed, um, and the good, the bad, the ugly, whatever it is, please document it, it's going to help us, provide us with direction to move forward in a way that's positive, it's a perfect opportunity to make change, uh, not just for yourself, but collectively, and, and to help us, um, as we move forward, so, uh, just please, um, if you have the opportunity, complete that survey, um, and I think, I don't know if it was subconscious in my mind or conscious, but I did not, we did not vote on Ms. Hagan's or approve her retirement, and I, I, she's a tough lady, I don't want to make her mad, uh, and have her not be able to retire, uh, soon, so, uh, if, if you don't, and I'm sorry, Jeff, I'm going over here, uh, but this is, be, I know, this leg was long, you would have kicked me, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the letter of retirement of Linda Hagan, School Cook, with thanks and regret effective October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting at six thirty-two, Matt, uh, is that second?
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.